All right, it's 7:00 on Monday, December 18th. And with that, we're going to call this session of the State and City Council to order. May you please join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and for the record, Counselor Ort is excused tonight. That leaves the rest of the council present. Is there any announcements, additions to the agenda?
No.
Is there any declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera? Here none. Opportunity for a public comment? Looks like we don't have any public comment tonight. Consent agenda from December 4th. What would the council like to do on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Giulio.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. Second the motion.
The move in second to accept the consent agenda as submitted. Is there any further discussion? Okay, halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. This is an opportunity for presentation, and we're going to hear from Mr. Tate about small municipalities advocacy coalition. Giulio, anything to add before Mr. Tate comes up?
Yes, I was going to say no, but I'll say yes. No, you can go ahead and come on up. Sorry, I just wanted to remind the council that Mayor Quigley forwarded a presentation that he had provided to another jurisdiction, asked council if you wanted to receive a similar presentation, and you said yes, or the, I heard a majority of you saying yes, and so we invited him, and here he is. So with that, I will let him take it away.
Thank you.
Well, while that's being worked on, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening. I greatly appreciate it. Once again, I'm Sean Tate. I own and operate Tate Public Affairs. It's a government relations advocacy firm based out of my home in Lebanon. So I've been a Lamont Valley person for a long, long time, grew up in Corvallis. I did not come to politics from a political background. I came to politics actually from a marketing background. I don't have a degree in political science or anything fancy like that. I don't love politics. In fact, I don't like it at all. I like policy, right? I like good outcomes as opposed to the political fight. My business plan was written specifically to try to benefit rural Oregon and rural Oregon businesses. I don't work in Portland. I used to work in Southern Oregon, but my heart is in the Lamont Valley. My heart is with rural communities. So with that, if you have any questions along the way, feel free to raise your hand, get my attention, and I'll do my best to answer them. Just a very brief presentation about our organization. A little bit about how we got off the ground probably a year ago, actually a year ago in December, there was an article, I think, in the Albany Democrat Herald that featured some quotes from Scott McDowell, who's the city manager in Brownsville, and specifically talking about challenges that small municipalities have with advocacy at the state level, with priorities being recognized, with priorities being, you know, kept down lower than they should be. And I called him up, and I said, this is what I do professionally. Is there an opportunity for us to work together? And we connected. What started as three organizations or three communities, which is Brownsville, Harrisburg, and Halsey, is now including Syo, Monroe, and Sotaville, and we have at least a dozen more that we've had meetings or contact with, including several up and down the canyon here, the South San Yam Canyon, with a lot of help from your representative, Ed Deal, who has done some outreach to people on our behalf. So that's a little bit of the background, how we got here, so move ahead.
And while you're, I just want to make a note for people at home. The council can see the presentation, but apparently we're having issues with the screen sharing, so people will be able to, people will be able to hear Mr. Tate, and then we will post the presentation online with the meeting materials.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So I put this quote in here simply because it's, I think it's valuable, it's interesting, and it's the reason I got into politics in the first place, and probably why some of you are here as well. Maybe you probably didn't grow up thinking you were going to be on city council or anything like that, yet here we are. Just because you don't take an interest in politics doesn't mean politics won't take an interest in you. It's an absolute fact about what we do. Oregon is a very rural state. As I started looking into what rural means and why we're rural and why that's important, I did some homework. We have 241 reporting communities in the state. 217 have populations of fewer than 25,000, okay? That's a very large percentage. 185 less than 10,000, and fully 67% of the communities in our state are smaller than populations of 5,000. If you take the top 10 most populous cities off the roster, the average community in Oregon is 5,800 individuals, okay? We're a state of small towns, and we've chosen to live that way, and yet the consensus, at least among my friends and colleagues in this conversation, is that those priorities are overlooked. The advocacy model forces the priorities to go elsewhere, and they need a change. We still have the same problems as the rest of the big communities, and I made some changes to this earlier. I don't know that they didn't transfer over, but there's a lot of conversations going on about Measure 110 right now, and whether it's going to be repealed, and whether it's going to be changed, or what's happening. We've had multiple conversations at the state level involving communities larger than 25,000 people, right? But communities like Staton and Brownsville, and Mill City and Gates, they all have issues with houselessness, homelessness, drug use, illegal drug use, all those things do not get invited to the table necessarily for those conversations. There's not a lot of grace for the differences that we have. We don't have the funding base that large communities have. There are small towns in Oregon with millions and millions of dollars' worth of infrastructure needs who get told to apply for grants to solve their problems. Very few policymakers outside of rural districts know a whole lot about Oregon. I bet most of those numbers that we put up about average population would be a surprise. And we need to be seen as more than just places to visit. The advocacy challenges are real. The larger cities and larger communities get the attention of the public bodies. The rural community needs are left out generally of the larger public policy discussions. That's at least been the experience of my colleagues in this conversation. So SMAC, and that's what we like to call ourselves, because it's a lot more fun than saying Small Municipalities Advocacy Corporation over and over, it's a growing partnership of small communities mutually invested in being a strong voice for rural Oregon. There doesn't appear to be one of those right now, and we all believe that there needs to be. We're prioritizing rural Oregon, but we're going to do it a little bit differently. We're taking, we're changing the advocacy model up, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a second. So how we work is, and a couple important things to say here, we're not a fundraising organization. We're not a political action committee. We're not asking for money from anybody to give to anybody else, right? That's a very complicated step to take, and at this point in the development of this organization, we're not quite there yet. What we're doing is we're binding these communities together under a non, under an NGA, right? I'm sorry, an IGA, intergovernmental agreement. It's informal, but essentially what it is, is it makes sure that everybody's aligned on the same general approach here, right? We're all trying to coalesce around the issues that are of concern, whether we like them, whether we support them, whether we don't like them, whether we want to block them, or eventually move our own policy packages forward. So your members work closely with me, my team, some colleagues, to help do all, really all of the internal policy analysis that we're asked to do, write the letters and collateral material that we're going to be asked to present on our opinions on these topics, run what are called legislative action teams. A legislative action team is simply one or two people from every council who agree to be at least a small resource, or send letters, or sign letters, or send emails on a particular issue. So we all work together on the bills that get introduced during the beginning of a legislative session to prioritize what we like and what we don't like, right? There's going to be about, I'm guessing, 400 individual pieces of legislation dropped at the end of January for our short session that runs the beginning of next year. They're not all going to matter to SMAC, right? But several of them are going to be about land use, several of them are going to be about Measure 110 fixes, things that we have some, and houselessness, things that we have some very genuine concerns with. So we're going to coalesce around those issues as a group. As a group, we're going to have, hopefully, very consistent engagement at the city level. We want to be at these meetings as often as we can so that we can have discussions with you guys about what your individual needs are. So it's an informal group that's going to behave in a very organized fashion. So it really is a pretty small commitment that we're asking for, both financially and from you guys as counselors. It's not a ton of work. Nobody's going to call you up and say, I need you to write a letter about why your water system needs to be replaced, or anything like that. We're going to have larger global discussions around, on issues that we can all agree are important, work together on the messaging, and then have individuals, individual counselors, individual cities move that advocacy up the ladder, right? Instead of having a lobbyist go in and talk to policymakers, which we do all day long, we follow them all throughout the building, right, everywhere, they're going to turn to me someday and say, tell me what the real problem is, and I'm not an expert in the water system in Staton, or anything like that. That's where this model brings the educated council into the fold, so. We're going to have some fun with this too, because SMAC is a pretty fun thing to say around the Capitol, and we're going to have some T-shirts made, some buttons made. One of the things I've noticed in seven years of doing this up in Salem is that the groups that get noticed in the building all have something unique about them, right? It's either messaging, or oftentimes what they're wearing when they come to the building. We eventually want everybody in that building to know who the Small Municipalities Advocacy Coalition is, and why we're there, and what our issues are, and it's going to take us being branded. So we're working on the branding for this organization right now. Social media posts are going to start soon. I have a blog post that's about ready to publish. We're going to do as active policy engagement as we can possibly do in a short legislative session, and try to have some fun with it as well. Everybody asks about ROI, right? Everybody wants to know what and if there is an immediate return in government relations, and sometimes there is, but government relations and lobbying and politics and policy doesn't always work that way. So we're defining our success a little bit differently when we get out of the gate. We're going to have a successful first year if all of our member municipalities are visible in the conversations in Salem, either with logos on letters, or emails sent, things of that nature. We're going to be doing very strategic focused policy work that sets the future stage for us to do our own policy package push during the long session in 2025. Visibility and branding, of course, as I mentioned before, working with our advocacy partners. You can't do this alone. The League of Oregon Cities remains an advocacy partner for us, even though we don't always agree that we're all pointed in the same direction, or that we all have the same priorities. But this isn't, this isn't about anybody being better, or anything like that. This is about creating those partnerships so that they can tell us when we can help them, and we can tell them when we need their help, and we can all be the squeaky wheel together when we can. Strategic relationship development, and then of course policymakers recognizing their resource. We're successful if you get a phone call from a legislator saying, what do you think about this bill, and how it affects your community, right? Now I imagine, Mayor Quigley, you get phone calls like that every now and then, right? It's important. It would be better if everybody got phone calls like that, right, every time there was a policy question that came up, but it doesn't often happen. So here's the pricing model. We've really tried to keep this as low a barrier for entry as we possibly can. We have very small communities in Oregon that want to be participants in this. Sotaville is our smallest at this point, with 330 people in that town, but this is important enough to them that they're putting $75 a month into it. I anticipate, at the rate that we're going right now, by the end of probably March or April after session ends next year, we could be close to 25, maybe 30 members of SMAC right now. We have enough people in the pipeline, and our goal is 100 ultimately before we get to the long session for 2025. Here's our timeline. We are kind of right in the middle of beginning to prep for legislative session. We're going to start seeing what the bills are that are going to get dropped here very shortly, and start communicating about what those bills are that we should engage in, and what we should maybe stay out of. Then we have our short session, which runs early February to early March, and then we debrief and talk about how it worked. Were we efficient? Were we effective? Where did we hit the mark? Where did we miss the mark? And what do we need to do better when we come back in 2025? Right? And then, one of the things I'm most excited about is for the 25 legislative session, we start putting our own policy packages together. Instead of hoping and waiting for other advocacy organizations to grab a hold of our priorities, we're going to grab, we're going to put our own together and lift them up the way large advocacy organizations do, and see if we can't get some traction on the things that we need specifically. And then we go back into the cycle, another short session, then another long session. But we have a two-year on-ramp here, really, to get the, to get SMAC to the size that we want it to be, so we have critical mass for conversations and discussions, and get our processes and procedures dialed in. Branding, working on it right now. Earned media, got my first media inquiry from a newspaper the other day about SMAC, and I'm really excited about it. So there will be others. We haven't even sent out a press release about this yet. It's just organic in nature. The web presence, we have a website. It's not nearly as robust as I want it to be. We'll have that up and running at full capacity before the short session starts. Communications, I'm working on all of the branded material that we're going to use, the letterhead, the bill alerts that we're going to send out to legislators for things that we like and things that we don't like, so we're going to have a very professional set of collateral material ready for us to go. Information and structure is very, at this point, very loose in terms of information sharing, because we don't want to be too rigid for the short session and miss opportunities, okay? And coalition development, like I said earlier, we can't do this alone. The more people that we can bring to a table when we have an issue that we want discussed that share our same concerns, or at least are sympathetic to our concerns, that brings power to the legislative conversation, and we're going to try to do that. And I guess that's the last slide. And that's just anything you'd ever want to know about me. So I'm excited to bring this to you now in its infancy. We are looking to build membership as rapidly as we possibly can, and like we said in the beginning, we're here because we think that there's some commonality between the issues that small communities up and down this canyon face regarding getting the attention of policymakers making the decisions, and ultimately, that's why we're here. So with that, I'd ask anybody for questions, or comments, or concerns, or...
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Tate?
Thank you, Mr. Tate. I appreciate you coming down here.
Thank you.
I had a couple questions, just as you kind of go on through, and to hold back until we got to the end.
Okay.
You mentioned Measure 110. I was just curious, what, if any, advocacy your organization would be doing to mitigate the problems that we see in our communities from the passage of that legislation?
What should you be doing, or what do you think we might be doing as an organization?
What do you think you might be doing as an organization? I think would probably be the best question to ask there.
So purely speculative on my part, the first thing that I have to do is have conversations with all the communities about what the direct impacts are. I can talk about what I think Measure 110 is statewide as a problem, but that's not what SMAC is talking about. SMAC is all about bringing the perspective of the small community's problem to the legislature. So what I will be doing with 110 is meeting with all of my member cities and making sure that we have the right topics to coalesce around. I'm assuming that there's going to be quite a bit of interest in this during the legislative session. As you may or may not know, we went to Portugal as a legislative body in the last few weeks to try to figure out how to deal with Measure 110, and I, like it or not, that seems to be where this focus is going to be. So to really answer your question, what I need is the message, right? What is the direct harm that we can point to? What is the solution that we want to see implemented as SMAC members and small communities that we can all coalesce around? I don't know that off the top of my head right now. I have to have conversations with you first. But ultimately, that's what we want to do, is uncover the answer, uncover the communication point, and then take our perspective to the legislature. We can't be left out of conversations about houselessness when communities of 40,000 and higher are invited to talk. Why aren't small communities across Oregon invited to have those conversations? So that's, quite frankly, that model is the model that gets used for most of the positions that we take and the activities that we do. We have to have the discussion first, have to know what the talking points are, have to be able to bring a solution to the table as well as a complaint, right?
That makes sense, thanks. Follow-up on that, though, at this point with the member cities that sounds like you've already identified, have you brainstormed any large policy, you know, option packages that you already are planning on pushing through when you begin becoming active in the legislature?
No, not at this point, Counselor. We don't have a policy package set up yet, simply because we haven't had those conversations about what the policy package might be by community. That's a 25 push for us, and that will really start after the short session concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Tate.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Giulio.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Tate.
You bet.
Yeah, so just kind of dive in a little bit more. So the way I'm understanding it is, in 2024, the priority is more reactive, right? So it's to say, we want to wait to see what the bills are, and then take positions on those bills, city by city.
Correct.
As a group.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And then moving out of that, you're going into a debrief, and then developing a policy packages for the long session.
Correct.
With the member cities.
And the reason why it looks like that right now is it's January, and we're, the bills that are going to get dropped in the short session were figured out six months ago, right? When SMAC was merely a twinkle in my eye, and Scott's eye, and everybody else's eye. We start calling around and looking for policymakers that have bills for us to be able to use, those bills get taken up by policy ideas pretty early. So we actually are talking now with folks like Rep. Deal and others about their 25 bills that we can use for policy packages. It's that cycle, it's not a fast cycle, so, but that is correct, your interpretation of the timeline.
Absolutely, and I just want a question on, I saw something on your slideshow around a, like a, I can't remember the name of it, but I think it's a policy advocacy group or something. It's basically, you said there were members of different communities?
Legislative action team.
Okay, yeah.
Is that what you're saying about?
Yes, yeah. Can you talk to me a little bit about that?
Yeah, so traditionally, a legislative action team is a group of people within a client entity, right? And I'll speak about, when I have a client, it's typically not a whole bunch of communities or an association, but it works the same way. When I have a client, I identify people within the organization who are subject matter experts, right? If it's a hospital, then there's a Medicare expert, or there's a hospitalist expert, or there's a, right? Those are the people that I engage when there's a specific question about their area of expertise, right? So our community members, our community members are going to identify as counselors what their interest is. Do you have an interest in water policy? Do you have an interest in land use policy, right? And when the question comes up about your policy area, as a member of the legislative action team, you may be asked to sign an email, or sign a letter, or contribute, or maybe even call a policymaker and say, no, 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 you need to understand this from a technical point of view, and our lobbyists can't do that. So that's the purpose and scope of a legislative action team. It's not a lot of work, but what it takes is a willingness to act relatively quick. The legislative process towards the end of the legislative session truncates down to two hours' worth of notice, right? So when there's things that happen, or need to happen, sometimes they need to happen fast. Those are the things that we need to work out in terms of how we communicate with each other to get messages out and responses back. We'll get there just fine, so. That answer your question?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
And then I was just wondering, you have it up here, I was wondering if you could just share with us a little bit more about your, just your experience as a lobbyist, and, yeah?
Sure. So I came out of the newspaper business. I left Bend in 2013. That was my last job in the newspaper business. I ruined the newspaper business for everybody, it seems. And my father-in-law, at the time, was a legislator, a former legislator from Southern Oregon. His name's John Watt, and he ran three terms, and term limited out back when Oregon had term limits, and he started an advocacy firm, and he came to me and he said, do you want to do this? And I said, I don't like politics, and he said, none of us do. And, you know, the things that really cross over between advertising and marketing and sales and this is relationship development and strategy. You don't need a public, you don't need a political science degree to do my job, thank goodness, right? I've been doing this now seven, seven and a half years, and I absolutely love it. Like I said, I wrote my business plan on the idea that rural Oregon needed representation too, right? There's 600 and some odd lobbyists in the state of Oregon who are registered, and the vast majority of them work in the metro areas, because that's where the big associations reside, and the larger organizations reside, and all of those things. But I don't want to do that. I live in Lebanon. I've chosen to live rurally, and I've chosen to build my business around rural, so.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Yep, my pleasure.
Anybody else? Mr. Tate, thank you for coming out and highlighting your business.
My pleasure. I look forward to hopefully securing your support and your membership in SMAC at some point in the near future, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. With that, we'll move on. There is no public hearing that I'm aware of, so we'll move on to general business. That would start with Resolution Number 1084, adopting the City of Staton's addendum to the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And as soon as Alyssa's done here, we'll let Alyssa give a quick update. All good.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is consideration of Resolution Number 1084, adopting the City of Staton's addendum to the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Over the past year and a half or so, the city staff had worked with Marion County Emergency Management to develop this plan, and it has been included in the larger Marion County's Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. So what we're looking at and requesting that you adopt tonight is our section of that plan. There, I have also Greg Walsh, who is the Director of Emergency Management with Marion County, to answer any questions you might have. And then I just wanted to add, it was brought to my attention, a couple of buildings were left off the national, there's a list in there on page 14-7, Section 14, .5, .6, that lists properties that are on the National Registry of Historic Places, the Beauchamp Building at Third and High, and the Brown House on North First Avenue. I worked with Mike Hints at Marion County to add those, so they've been added to, you just don't have that draft in front of you, so what we're asking is that you adopt as amended. And I think there was a spelling error also brought to my attention, but that's just a Scribner's error that we can fix, and I'll work with Mike to get that done. That is all that I have. I'm happy... I am happy to answer questions, or even better probably is Greg, to answer your questions if you have any.
Okay, thanks, Alyssa.
Yeah.
Another opportunity for public comment on Resolution 1084. Don't hear any. Counsel? Go ahead.
Just, sorry, I just want to acknowledge that we became aware of the two buildings that were not on the list because a wonderful resident read the packet and provided comments. So I'm just very appreciative that people read the packet and comment, so I just wanted to note that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's quite an in-depth project, reading through this, so I appreciate the effort that went into it. Counselor Patty.
Nobody has any questions? Move on to a decision?
Sure.
Very cool. Mr. Mayor, I move, I motion to approve counsel, or approve Resolution Number 1084, adopting the City of Statean addendum to the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan as amended.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve Resolution Number 1084, adopting the City of Statean addendum to the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan as amended. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
That leaves us to the next one, Resolution Number 1082, delegating authority of, delegating authority to the mayor to advocate on behalf of the city to elected officials. Julia?
Yes, thank you. If you recall, I think, in the, early in 2023, I brought this issue up, and just due to the timeliness of things, the council made a motion that essentially did what this resolution will do. The motion basically granted the mayor the authority to do this through 2023. I think it's worked well, and so I put before you this resolution that will give him the authority to do the same through 2024. So that's what's being requested.
Thank you. Another opportunity for public comment on Resolution Number 1082. Counsel, what would you like to do?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty.
Counsel Patty.
Yeah, Ryan, I was just kind of curious about this in general. Do you feel this last year, that your delegation of authority and the way that we have has been sufficient, and then going forward, is there anything you feel like we can do to improve it, or any thoughts on that? That's kind of where I wanted to start the conversation.
Yeah, thanks for that. I have found it beneficial last year, obviously this year, to address the items that came up that I thought are pressing towards our community. That was with the help of Julia, obviously. When something came up, as Sean, as Mr. Tate just mentioned, the way it whittles down to have an answer right away was what we found ourselves in, and that's, I think, how the resolution initially came up last time. I will tell you that I am very reserved about it still. When there's something that I don't feel comfortable without having to pull counsel's consensus on, I'll ask Julia, hey, can you send this out? And just make sure I feel the pulse of the council right now, but I want to make sure I confirm that with y'all. And so that's, there has been times where I've just let it quash, because I don't feel that, A, we didn't have enough time for you guys to give feedback, or B, that I don't think that's the way our community wants to go right now because of the risk. And so I'm stalking, my commitment to you is to still do that today if we were to pass this resolution.
Follow up on that, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Is there anything we can do to support you better in that role? I mean, it's, it kind of sounds like maybe better timely responses over email and things like that, or?
No, I think the one I'm just thinking of right now, the most recent one, the timeframe that was given to us was too short for us to solicit any kind of feedback from you. The window closed very quick, it was like 48 hours, it was really not a good time. But on that note, though, I really appreciate the efforts that you, all of you have taken this past year to help me advocate for the city. We went to legislative days with Counselor Sims, you were with me as well, I really appreciate that. And so just keep that going, keep that in mind going forward. I think the short session probably won't be too many opportunities for that, but definitely a 25, 27 by any of them is going to be an opportunity, and that's what I'd like to see just from a commitment standpoint, so.
Awesome, thanks.
Yep. Anybody else? All right, Counsel, what would you like to do?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor McDonald.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 1082, delegating authority to mayor, quickly to advocate on behalf of the city for the 2024 calendar year.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve Resolution Number 1082, delegating authority to the mayor to advocate on behalf of the city to elected officials. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries four to zero. Moves us on to Resolution Number 1083, formalizing a commercial use conversion for SDC policies. Julia?
So thank you, Mayor and Counsel. This is more of a housekeeping measure, or a proactive housekeeping measure. This year, the legislature adopted House Bill 2984 that requires local governments of a certain size to allow conversion of buildings from commercial to residential. And unless they have specific policies in place, they aren't allowed to charge SDCs, system development charges for that conversion. We don't qualify yet for that threshold requirement, but under the advice of our city attorney, he suggested that we put a formal policy in place so that if we reached that threshold at some point in the future, we don't get dinged because this policy has to be in place by the end of this year. And then also, if there is any change in that threshold, we are, have that policy in place. So it's a sort of a proactive interpretation or policy, and we recommend approval of the resolution.
Thank you. This is another opportunity for public comment on Resolution Number 1083. Okay, Counsel, what would you like to discuss?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor McDonald.
Julia, if this is in place, would the calculation for the SDCs basically be the same as any other type of development, or was there some different math involved there?
It would be the same as we are currently doing, and really, the system development charges will be whatever is more. So if you're, if you're going from something that has a $10,000 SDC to something that has a $5,000 SDC, you don't owe any additional SDCs. But if you're going from $10,000 to $15,000, you would have to pay the difference between...
Are those calculated by number of units or square footage, or what's, do you know?
It was, we've got different system development charges. We've got water, sewer, storm, and transportation and parks. So it's going to be dependent on what those, what those things are. So for commercial, it's based on, well, for all of them, it's based on trips, so the transportation's going to be based on trips. So depending on sizes of the commercial building versus the residential rate, that's going to tell you whether or not it's more or less.
Gotcha, okay. Let's all head.
Anybody else? Counsel decision?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Patty.
I move to approve Resolution Number 1083, adopting a policy for system development charge calculations in connection with commercial to residential conversions.
Counselor McDonald seconds.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve Resolution Number 1083, formalizing a commercial use conversion SDC policy. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Moves us on to Resolution Number 1085, authorizing submittal of a loan application for sewer upgrades. Mr. Brand?
For the record, James Brand, Finance Director for the City of Statean. So currently, the city's in the first year of a five-year plan to do some wastewater upgrades to the systems, and currently, Ida Street is on that docket right now, so you've seen those. Then in October, we met with some state agencies, some federal agencies, at a one-stop meeting, and we just learned about some different opportunities for funding projects. The most attractive one financially was from the DEQ, which included a long-term, low-interest-rate loan, just over 2%, and also a lot of debt forgiveness. So up to 50% of a project could be basically forgivable per project. So we just want to pursue that opportunity, and so the first part of that is a loan application. So that process is underway, and we seek your approval. This resolution has nothing to do with a final loan or anything, there's no debt being obtained through this. If it came to that, we would come to you again with final numbers and things before that, so. With that, we do recommend you approve this as presented. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, this is another opportunity for public comment on Resolution Number 1085. I don't hear any counsel discussion. Counsel Patty.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a question. I don't think I, I'm not against this, but I will say, I'm not especially fond of the idea of borrowing money if we can avoid it. However, comma, this opportunity includes low, long-term, low-interest loans estimated at 2.01%, and also loan forgiveness up to 50% of the total project cost, so in that case, I am in support of this. I just want to be clear on that and where I stand on the whole lending thing.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sims?
So, James, what are we looking at for a loan amount? I mean, an estimated amount, I know you don't have the exact numbers, but...
Yeah, I believe the total project cost is around $8 million, and we're already a year into that, so we've spent some of that. So it's the remaining, I believe it's about $6 million that we were thinking were in these projects. And DEQ is suggesting we break it into two projects, so there could be more loan forgiveness. So it's likely that our application would be around $6 million with somewhere around $3 to $3.5 million that could be forgivable if we meet all the qualifications.
Counsel McDonald.
Yeah, I'm definitely in support of this. Interest rate like that, you know, even with inflation as in normal ranges, it's basically free money. There's no downside, so I'd be, I'll be fully in support of doing that. Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Counsel Julia, anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to agree. Yeah, I think it, if you, yeah.
Okay.
It's just, when you have inflation like we are, it's, it's, it's free money.
All right, let's go with the counsel decision, then.
Mr. Mayor, I motion we approve Resolution Number 1085, allowing the city to submit an application for loans and/or grants for financing upgrades to this wastewater systems.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to adopt Resolution Number 1085, authorizing submittal of a loan application for sewer upgrades. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. That moves us on to Resolution Number 1087, adopting an amendment to the 23, 24 fiscal year fee schedule related to water rates. Mr. Brand?
Yes, thank you. Resolution 1087, first of all, I just want to make sure everyone understands, this has nothing to do with residential water rates, nor is it going to change any rate that's being billed. Everything is being billed as intended, and we're receiving the revenue as intended. So what happened was, there was a bit of a consolidation in our fee schedule, and one component of the water rate for commercial and industrial was removed. So the water rates are made up of four things. There's a usage charge, and then there's a base charge, a meter equivalent charge based on the size of the meter, and there's a fire line standby charge. And that fire line standby charge is what was omitted in the chart, and there's a chart that you can see the original schedule and then what we're proposing to change it to. So this resolution will add that chart back, and then this will be reposted on the internet, our website, and be made available. So we just want to make sure that that's clear, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, one more time for public comment, Resolution Number 1087. Doesn't seem to appear to be any counsel discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Julia.
So I think you just said this, and almost paused this, what you just said. So just to clarify, what happened was, it was collapsed into, basically like that charge was being charged, it was just collapsed into the, the meter equivalent charge there? Or the, or the base rate?
It was collapsed into the base rate, yes.
Okay.
So the fire by, the fire standby charge was not identified in the rate.
Okay, but it was charged in revenue collective?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? What would the council like to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Julia.
Yeah, I'll move to adopt Resolution 1087 as presented.
It's been moved in seconded to adopt Resolution Number 1087, adopting an amendment to the 23, 24 fiscal year fee schedule related to water rates. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Please, this is item number nine, communication from city staff, street sweeper presentation. Lance?
Lance is joining us virtually, but he has a presentation.
And you cannot start your video because it has stopped. Well, I don't necessarily need my video. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you, and we've got your presentation up.
All right, outstanding. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sorry, you can't see me, but this really goes back to last spring during the budget hearings. We brought up the issue of we needed a new street sweeper and that we were going to go as Public Works and start looking for a new street sweeper. Over the last six, seven months, we have identified, we've looked at four, we identified three to dig deeper into, I'm sorry, listen, next slide. And we've looked at those three sweepers fairly closely in the last six months. Here's some just background information, the reasons why we use the street sweeper. We have trash-filled roads that can be hazardous, drivers, pedestrians, cyclists have to maneuver to hit, avoiding hitting debris, they could lead to accidents, sometimes garbage is thrown out of, you know, the backs of trucks and so forth. Storm drains get filled with leaves and they clog drains, and which causes flooding, which causes hazardous conditions. And it also sweeps, we just, in the summertime, in the spring, summertime, where there's not very many leaves on the ground, we're cleaning up heavy metals from our streets. And that's really a health and health problem. You don't really want your children out running around, playing around, potential heavy metals and dust in the road, so we try to do our best to street sweep the streets on a weekly basis, and then in the wintertime, we use outstreet sweeping every day to try to get the leaves off the, off the street. And over the past several years, we've started investing more and more into our street sweeper because of maintenance issues. We've had it for 10 years now, and it's time just to replace it. And so that's what we've been doing for the last six months, is doing some research on that, looking at different street sweepers and so forth. Next slide, please, listen. And the three that we really focused on is the Schwartz A9 Monsoon, the Elgin Crosswind One, and the Global Air Four. And they're pretty much alike, except for the maintenance issues and the size of their hoppers. The Global Air Four is like about a half of the size of the hopper, where all the leaves go into as the Elgin and the Schwartz, so there'd be more trips back and forth to the dump site, and they would fill up a lot sooner, especially in the fall and winter, when we're picking leaves and so forth. So that kind of, just that in itself, it kind of eliminated that from the, of the selection, just because it'd be a lot more maintenance hours cleaning the streets. Just because it's, it'd be a lot more maintenance hours cleaning the streets, especially in the fall. And so they each all have vacuum systems, they're broomed, they have large hoppers with the exception of the Global Air Four. And they all have excellent fuel efficiency. Next slide, please. The differences, again, you can see the Schwartz has a 9.6 hopper, short sweeper times, fewer man-hours. Familiarity, that is actually the sweeper that we have now, except for it's a model that was 10 years old. But it is the Schwartz. We've had good, we've had a good experience with that. And the Elgin, it's a little smaller hopper, shorter sweeper times, a little fewer man-hours, but still be more than, than the Schwartz. And the Global would be a lot more dump trips, more man-hours. Next, next slide, please. Maintenance, there's multiple electric panels on the Schwartz. We're familiar with the sweeper and its maintenance schedule and parts. And local service technicians that we have already are reliable, and so we really feel comfortable with that. Same could be said with the Elgin, except for we don't have, we don't have local support. And the Global is a very new sweeper. I think it's just come out in the last few, few years. And so we don't really have a whole lot of documentation for maintenance and schedule, or maintenance schedule, but also the maintenance issues that it comes up with. So that's one thing that we wanted to make sure of, is that we knew, we wanted the most information we could find with these sweepers. And that was the sweeper that we could find the least amount of information with. Next slide. Safety, again, familiar with the Schwartz. It's got a dual steering cab, which allows for easy training of employees. I like to cross-train my employees in public work, so it's not just one person out. Street sweeping at a time, we can have more people, you know, swap out. If we got to go longer hours, they can, we can do a role as far as our shifts, our split shifts and so forth, so we can continue this process in the street sweeping. The Elgin also has that, so it's easy for training. We have no experience with the Elgin. And then the Global is just a one, one center-mounted cab. Well, there's some benefits to that. You can see the visibility is a little better. We still don't really care for not knowing much about it, but it was in our top three. Next slide, please. Our conclusion after our Public Works staff had taken the time, and we looked at all three of those very close. We've had demonstrations for all three. Our Public Works staff recommend purchasing the Monsoon. It's familiar, it's got a good service record, it's got a large hopper, so we'll have fewer trips and man-hours. It's great for training personnel, and it's got a good record of service. And so with that, that is the, the street sweeper that we'd like to move forward with. We've already put a purchase order in with that, but I wanted to come forward and talk to you folks about it and let you know what we've decided. And I'll take any questions that you have.
Lance, are we going to be able to trade the old one in?
Yes, sir, we are. That's part of the package.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions?
So what did we pay for that?
This is $380,000.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Hey, Lance, what do we get for the old one?
What'd we get? We got $25,000 trade-in.
That's it?
That's it. It's 10 years old. And if you were to climb underneath it, I had one of my Public Works, street sweeper workers come and talk to me today, and, well, it was actually last week. And he said the hole on their side needs to be rebuilt. So, you know, I'm not a maintenance man, but that doesn't sound cheap. So that's what they offered. I guess we could go out to, you know, I, there's a couple of cities that would like to buy it from us. I'm not sure I feel comfortable with selling it to Sublimity or Turner. I don't want it to break down on them and then feel, you know, real bad about that for what we get. So, I mean, we can look at that. There's no, there's no, there's no guarantee we have to. I didn't guarantee that we're going to trade it in. So if we want to move in that direction, you can let me know, and I'll explore that.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, don't do a ton of research on this, you know what I mean? Like, but if we can get more than $25,000, we should be good stewardship of the taxpayers.
I agree with that. Again, I, we also want to be good partners with our neighbors. And I don't want to sell them a lemon. And that's one of the things that I prefer not to do, but I will look into it, Counselor.
I mean, you can market it out there and have them make their own assessment, right? I mean, still, that's, I think that from a partnership standpoint, it only makes sense.
Very good. I'm fine with doing that.
Lance, what did we have in the budget for the street sweeper? I don't recall what we, what we had.
We had, we had $350,000 on this. So I felt a little, I felt bad about this, but that's what I was told last February when we were doing this. And I've been assured that if we don't purchase now this exact sweeper, it will go up 15 to 20% over the next year. So if we want to wait and re-budget correctly for it for next fiscal year, we might as well just add 15 to 20% onto what we're paying now. So it's going to be considerably more.
I can attest to that. Anybody else? Thanks, Lance.
Thank you. Sorry for the camera problems. I don't know what, what happened tonight, but thanks very much.
All good. Julia?
I just have one more announcement. I'm sure you noticed at your seats, the little tokens for the pool. I mentioned that after the League of Oregon Cities Conference that we were going to get little tokens that would allow counselors, when you're out and about, and the mayor, counselors and the mayor, when you're out and about, interacting with your constituents to be able to give a free pass to the pool. We've coordinated with our pool manager, and she's familiar with it and ready. Actually, it sounds like Jefferson, where she's also manages the pool. They do that, and she was actually quite excited about it. It's something that potentially we could hand out at events if we wanted to. But this is, I guess, a start for you guys. If you want to hand it out to people, you know, we encourage you to spread the wealth and not, you know, just give it to, to one family or whatever. But, you know, just kind of as you see fit. If you determine that you need more, let us know, and we'll be able to keep track. Obviously, they're reusable, so we'll be able to do that. And we'll, we'll monitor, obviously, how often they're being used. They're going to be coded in, I think, as a coupon. So we'll be able to keep track of what the value of this is. But we also think it's a great marketing tool. The more people we get to use the pool and see the pool, they will appreciate the pool and maybe go back when they don't have a free token. So we see it as a, as a bit of a win-win, so that's it.
Hey, Julia? Just want a recommendation for next summer?
Yes.
Maybe the PD could have these in their rigs, and when we find kids swimming in the ditch, we could?
That's a great idea.
Throw them on. Yeah, I'm absolutely serious about that. So, I mean, I see people swimming in the ditch quite often in the summer, and I think it's prohibited, so just an idea.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
All right, thank you. Any communication from Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Julia?
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe have a brief discussion on the SMAC presentation and just maybe thoughts that the counsel has on that, and, yeah.
Do you want to do that officially, or?
Yeah, yeah, I guess, do we want to have that now, or we want to talk about that?
I would rather postpone that till a subsequent meeting. I mean, you guys can talk informally. I don't want to make any decision about it tonight. Is that what you're?
Yeah.
You want to make a decision tonight?
No.
Okay.
I'm good. Now, that sounds good. What you're saying sounds good, yeah. Yeah, just maybe table it for, for later.
Yeah, we can put it on the next, one of the next agenda items coming up.
Yeah, that's great.
Counsel want to do that, or we're good with that? Okay, cool. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, real quick.
Go ahead, Counsel Patty.
Yeah, I just wanted to confer real quick with Julia, first off. Had you heard from the student government representatives with the school board yet on whether or not they'd be attending the next meeting?
I have not.
And then also, are we canceling the next meeting, or do we know?
We are hoping, we're planning on canceling the next meeting. It's January 2nd. And generally, we, my understanding is, in many councils, we'll cancel, cancel one around the holidays. So we're, we're trying not to put anything on the agenda for that meeting, and we don't currently have anything. Obviously, if something major comes up, we'll let you guys know. But then, so we're expecting that the next meeting will be February, January 16th, which is a Tuesday because of Martin Luther, Martin Luther King Jr. holiday.
Okay. Can you coordinate with the student government reps? Because they think that we're probably going to have that meeting, and they're, they're planning on attending that.
Oh, the January 2nd?
Yeah, that one. So let's, let's coordinate with them so they know which one to come to and not to come to.
Thank you, Counsel Patty. I really?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm really encouraged about that partnership. And having attended that, one of those school board meetings with you, and just watching the caliber of those two gentlemen, I'm excited for them, have them come here and showcase what's going on in the school district. So that's awesome. Having said that, that segues into what I wanted to talk about real quick. I appreciate from a partnership standpoint, the school district allowing the city, along with myself and Mayor Kingsbury from Sublimity, to come and do a presentation on Thursday about the If I Were Mayor contest. And that seemed to be received well and got off to a good start. And I see that there's a lot of publication or a lot of promotion around it. So thank you to Christian for doing that, Julia. Thank you for coming to the meeting with the school. It was really nice to meet those kids, and they got excited when they heard what the potential award amount was. And so that was, that was neat to see. So I appreciate that partnership. And if you haven't seen it yet, you'll see it some more out there, but here's the flyer for it, talks all about it. This is a partnership, or this is a contest put on by the Oregon Mayors Association to everybody in the state of Oregon. And we decided this year to partner with the four mayors in the canyon, myself, Counsel, I'm sorry, Mayor Kingsbury, Mayor Seha from Almsville, and then Mayor from Turner, to put this on and promote it. So that's what you see there, and we're rolling with that. So it's out there now, and you'll see it coming forward into the next year. And the last thing I want to say is I wanted to highlight the opening of the 505 Collective on Friday downtown. A lot of you folks were there to celebrate. Counsel Sims there, Counsel Patty I saw. Really neat to see that business come to fruition. That building has been sitting vacant for such a long time, and it's just great to see that. It's great to see the turnout of the community. And as Counsel Sim mentioned earlier, that Friday night, the place was hopping downtown. So really nice to see downtown having that level of involvement with the community. So with that, anything else? We'll adjourn.